Welcome and thank you, thank you and welcome to the February fifteenth meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Donald Zykowski.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Van Hagen.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Chester Ogilevitz.
Yeah.
Daniel Riss.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Thank you. Before we get on to any things, the approval of minutes, whatever, right after the roll call, what I'd like to do is start tonight on a very positive note. What I'd like to say is this, very briefly. In the past, and I'm going to invite Councilor Riss to step forward with me later, in the past, we have recognized our long-term employees for outstanding service. We have also honored our outstanding citizens and our athletes. Tonight, we have the esteemed pleasure of actually celebrating academic achievement, outstanding academic achievement. And to me, that is testimony that our schools are second to none. And with that, I'd like to recognize Councilor Riss, if he has a brief statement, and we can come to the front of the podium, front of the table, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President. I brought this forward to the council because I have good friends whose daughter, one of them, is a member of this team of students that have achieved this championship. Tonight, we are, as a city, fortunate to have a number of students here to be congratulated for an outstanding state championship that demonstrates the academic capability of the East Hampton school system. They won a championship which asked them to answer tough questions on the Constitution and Bill of Rights, and they did so, competing against other, much larger, schools. I'd like to read a description from the We the People program. "We the People, the Citizen and the Constitution is the most extensive educational program in the country to educate young people about the history and the principles of the Constitution and Bill of Rights. After completing a semester-long course using the We the People, the Citizen and the Constitution textbook, participating classes may choose to compete in simulated congressional hearings. Each member of the class becomes an expert witness on one of the six units in the text and then testifies in small groups before a panel of judges acting as U.S. Congressional representatives. During the simulated congressional hearing, students are judged on the following criteria: understanding, constitutional application, reasoning, supporting evidence, responsiveness, and participation." And I wanted to read this note, which I thought was real important. "We the People alumni vote at rates of ninety-two percent. Outperform the national sample of high school students in the national assessment of education progress. In every category of civic knowledge delineated in the survey, outperform university students on political knowledge tests, and exhibit less potential cynicism and are more politically tolerant than the average American." We should all take a lesson from that. "As a public servant myself, I am always amazed at the lack of participation when it comes to finding citizens to serve. These students represent the future of our country, and that their understanding of what our Constitution and rights mean to all of us may lead them to perhaps choose to serve the public, or at least seek to defend those rights. I also congratulate Kelly Brown and all our teachers, who work so hard with older, antiquated facility, yet inspire such fantastic achievement by their students. Also, this serves to dispel the perception that the quality of education is somehow lacking when some choose to go to another school district. We have that proof tonight. Imagine what our teachers and students will achieve when they have our new high school with modern, state-of-the-art technology. And finally, as a representative of our voters and taxpayers, who will soon see the sacrifice they agreed to on their tax bills for the new school, I am, as I hope they are, feeling justified with that sacrifice."
I would like to now step forward with President, and I hope I don't butcher your names. These are currently in alphabetical order, just so that you'll know if we made a mistake, that's all. D is first. Taylor Dabman.
(applause).
Tristan Koopman. Rihanna LaRose. Zachary Lewis. Baylor, I'm sorry, Bailey Murphy. Marco Palazza. Thomas Palacca. Willow Ross. Felicia Theron. Olivia Torres. And finally, the one we should be giving the loudest applause, Ms. Kelly Brown.
All the people on television and everybody here, they will be going to the national championships in April. There's a fundraising program out there for this, so if you're out there and you want to donate, I'm sure you can contact Peter. You got it? Great.
Well, I'll give a plug for the program, for our students who are going to be traveling to Washington. When I'm finished, I'd like everybody to stand and give them a rousing East Hampton applause for their first-place win in the We the People contest, my We the People team. If you'd like to donate to help them get to Washington, it's in care of Kelly Brown, the We the People, the H&amp;S, East Hampton High School Fund at Seventy Wilson Avenue, East Hampton, Mass., 1027. And please donate, help them out, let's see them get there, we'll do the best we can. So if we'll go, please stand, we'll give them a (applause). Thanks for coming. That said, I'd like to continue with a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
A motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next, what we have on the agenda is a public speak time. This is where we allow the public to address the city council. If there are any members present who would like to speak to the council, please step forward, state your name and address, and the podium is open. Wait a minute. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to reports, communication and reports from, and correspondence. Councilor McCoy.
Yes, thank you very much. We have a few, first of all, this is from the East Hampton Police Department. Every three years, the East Hampton Police Department holds its award ceremony to honor those who have made outstanding contributions to the department or community. The department recognizes the following categories of award: Commendation, Community Service Award, Merit Award, Life Saving Award, Meritorious Conduct, and Valor. Chief of Police Bruce McMahon cordially invites you to attend the award ceremony to be held on February twenty-seventh, which is a Monday, at 6:00 p.m. at White Brook Middle School Auditorium, which is at 200 Park Street. If you have any questions, you can contact Chief McMahon at 413-527-1212. Also, there was also additional communication from the police department mentioning that their exemplary police work over the period of years has netted them a significant amount of money, to the point that in the last, since two thousand and nine, almost every item, capital expense item, including unmarked cars, pickup trucks, computers, radios, printers, cell phones, has been able to pay with these monies from these drug seizures. And so, again, if you would like to see this letter and see the amount of monies that the police department's fine work has saved the city, that will be also available at the city clerk. We also had a communication from the Community Preservation Committee, just making the city council aware that there was an application from the Arch Street developers to develop fifteen Cottage Street, which is going to include some affordable housing. The CPA committee unanimously voted to reserve $200,000 of the Community Preservation Funds for this project. So that is something that in the future will be coming from the council to vote on, but that was just a notification from the CPA committee about their feeling on that. We also do have two letters from attorneys, which are lengthy and detailed, but they are in reference to the legality of the city council to rescind the $200,000 CPA appropriation for the Parsons Street Affordable Housing Project. Again, these are too lengthy to read publicly, but they will be as public record at the city clerk. So if you would like to see the legal opinions from both, excuse me, our city solicitor or the lawyer representing the Pioneer Valley CDC group, they will both be at record at the city clerk's office. And that concludes my report, luckily, because I'm losing my
Thank you. Still a little time left. Mayor, if you would like to have anything to say?
No, sir, don't have anything on your agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for the mayor at this point? Hearing none? Thank you. I have to give a little more time to allow for the public hearing, so I'm going to start with reports from standing committees. Councilor Riss?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules of Government Relations Committee did not meet this past week due to illness. We will be meeting to review the council ethics rule consideration on the twenty-ninth of this month at 6:00 p.m. in the Conference Room One in the set-first floor. That's the twenty-ninth, 6:00 p.m. Conference Room One to discuss this. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Councilor Hagan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item I have, I would like to set a public hearing on the consideration of a request to rescind $200,000 of CPA appropriation for sixty-nine Parsons Street. Matters currently in front of the subcommittee, and we have another meeting which will be held on the twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. on the second floor relative to that, but I wanted to set the public hearing for March seventh on that item.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion. Second.
We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the consideration of the request to rescind the $200,000 in CPA appropriation for sixty-nine Parsons Street. Matters currently in front of the subcommittee, and we have another meeting which will be held on the twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. on the second floor relative to that, but I wanted to set the public hearing for March seventh on that item. Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion. Second.
We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for the consideration of the request to rescind the $200,000 in CPA appropriation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, the public hearing is set. That concludes?
That concludes Finance.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to, on the table, to open a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppositions? Abstentions? None? I'm going to open with Councilor McCoy, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much. This is, the first public hearing is in relation to a request for a joint pole location on O'Neill Street. This is something that we're not uncommonly seeing. I spoke to Mr. Gluski from the Western Massic Electric about it, and it is in reference to a widening of O'Neill Street, which I assume was due to East Hampton Savings Bank, but I guess actually is related more to a widening of Love Field related to the closing of Route Ten at the West Street Bridge project. But I believe he is here to speak more to the project, so Mr. Gluski, if you'd like to fill the council in, that would be, thank you. You can just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Walter Czechwick from Western Massic Electric Company, and what we're doing, requesting permission to place a pole, as you can see, three hundred thirty-two feet easterly from the center line of North Hampton Street, and then twenty feet on the north side. And the reason for that is because you're going to be widening O'Neill Street, and we need to support that pole, so what we want to do is the guy pole to be capable to support that pole on the opposite side of the street, so be one on the north and then supporting the one on the southerly side. It's already been looked at by, already, water and sewer department's been out there, so it's already been marked, so they approved the locations where we want to place the pole.
Are there any questions for the gentleman? Are there any members of the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? So please state your name and address and put it record. Seeing none, Councilor McCoy?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make the motion. I move the city council approve the request to install a joint or identical pole located from the center line of Route Ten, North Hampton Street, three hundred thirty-two feet easterly and twenty feet northerly, install a new thirty-five-foot joint pole numbered two-two-eight slash fifteen S with anchor. The petitioner also agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on the said pole for fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
Second.
Okay, we have the aforementioned motion concerning the proposed guy pole on O'Neill Street needed to widen, because of widening the road on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Councilor Hagan?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have four appropriations tonight, public hearings. First one, I'll do a second reading on. This is a motion, I mean, excuse me, an appropriation request from January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, requesting the amount of $10,000 to be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to the tree warden, professional tree service. And the request is for the following purpose: to allow for continued tree care and removal service in fiscal two thousand and twelve. Has the three appropriate signatures from the city. And at this time, I guess if anyone's here to speak on the motion, we would be glad to, from the public. Hearing none, I could just say that from what the mayor said and the director of public work said, this is a result, at least in part, of the storms of late October, where it pretty much ate up all the resulting damage that was done, ate up the tree warden's budget, so he's coming back for appropriation to continue his normal, normal work that he would do throughout the, throughout the year.
Thank you. If there's anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, please state your name and address and come up to the podium. Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate the amount of $10,000 from free cash and appropriate to the tree warden, professional tree services, for the following purpose: to allow for continued tree care and removal services for fiscal two thousand and twelve. Second.
We have a motion on the table for the amount of $10,000 from free cash to the tree warden, professional tree services. This is to allow for continued tree care and removal services in fiscal two thousand and twelve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me?
I have one.
Before we go forward, there's some further discussion I forgot to ask.
The only thing I did want to mention is that was just passed the subcommittee on a three-zero vote.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Councilor Hagan?
The second supplemental appropriation, also dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, is a request in the amount of $14,500 to be appropriated from free cash in that figure, $14,500, to the highway, DPW Highway Department Capital Repair Expense. The following purpose of this requested amount is to repair and update a Model Two-Fifty Bandit Industries twelve-inch chipper in the highway department.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for the amount of supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $14,500 from free cash and appropriated to the tree warden, professional tree service. And the request is for the following purpose: to allow for continued tree care and removal service in fiscal two thousand and twelve. Has the three appropriate signatures from the city.
And at this time, I guess if anyone's here to speak on the motion, we would be glad to, from the public. Hearing none, I could just say that from what the mayor said and the director of public work said, this is a result, at least in part, of the storms of late October, where it pretty much ate up all the resulting damage that was done, ate up the tree warden's budget, so he's coming back for appropriation to continue his normal, normal work that he would do throughout the, throughout the year.
Thank you. If there's anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, please state your name and address and come up to the podium. Seeing none?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate the amount of $10,000 from free cash and appropriate to the tree warden, professional services, for the following purpose: to allow for continued tree care and removal services for fiscal two thousand and twelve.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for the amount of $10,000 from free cash to the tree warden, professional tree services. This is to allow for continued tree care and removal services in fiscal two thousand and twelve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me?
I have one.
Before we go forward, there's some further discussion I forgot to ask.
The only thing I did want to mention is that was just passed the subcommittee on a three-zero vote.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Councilor Hagan?
The second supplemental appropriation, also dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, is a request in the amount of $14,500 to be appropriated from free cash in that figure, $14,500, to be appropriated to the Department of Public Works Highway Department Capital Repair Expense. The following purpose of this requested amount is to repair and update a Model Two-Fifty Bandit Industries twelve-inch chipper in the highway department.
Okay, if there's anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak to this issue, please do at this time, just state your name and address. Seeing none, if the superintendent, Joe Pitt, would like to step to the podium, if you have anything to say?
It was just another one of those casualties of the storm. Back in October, we had a hunk of iron get thrown right out of the machine, and it's unusable right now.
Councilor Hagan?
I would say that the superintendent was a little more specific at the subcommittee and did say that they looked into the purchasing a new chipper. That would have been about $43,000, but I think he felt, and the people that repair him, felt that the repair was actually a more prudent measure, in that he felt it would last, so that's why we went with the $14,500. And again, like the past appropriation, this one passed three-zero, the subcommittee.
Thank you. Is there any, just any questions for the superintendent or further discussion?
Just a quick question. I'm glad you elaborated. What kind of longevity are we looking at with this $14,500 repair? I mean, compared to a new machine, what's the lifespan on a new machine? Can you just give me those two?
Well, we got twenty years out of the machine up until this point. If we get another ten or fifteen, I think we're doing good.
So you think with this repair, we might be able to get another ten or fifteen?
Hope to.
Okay.
Any further questioning? Councilor Riss?
I just wanted to comment that the superintendent did mention that they are replacing the entire chipper, as well as a lot of parts that may not necessarily be necessary to repair, but because they're in there, they're repairing things that normally were in tear with damage, so it sounded like a good idea, and it's a good price.
Okay. I'll make a brief comment on this. The both questions that were brought up, were brought up in Finance. They are going to actually upgrade the cutter a little bit on this machine to do so, and based on the superintendent's recommendations. We also talked about the quote that you see attached here that was a little out of date. They're very comfortable with that quote. And we've talked about the contingency in the event that, as they get into the repair, that there are additional parts that they need to look at, and they felt comfortable with this money, that they'll be able to cover all of it. That said, Councilor Hagan?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to, for the following appropriation in the amount of $14,500 that'd be appropriated from free cash in that figure, $14,500, to the highway, DPW Highway Department Capital Repair Expense, for the following purpose: to repair and update the Model Two-Fifty Bandit Industries twelve-inch chipper in the highway department.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to, for the amount of supplemental appropriation request, in the amount of $14,500 from free cash to DPW Highway Department Capital Repair Expense, to update and repair our chipper in the highway department. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Councilor Hagan?
Our third public hearing is a supplemental appropriation request from December twenty-second for the following appropriation: the request in the amount of $46,750 to be appropriated from retained earnings. In that amount, $46,750, to be appropriated to the wastewater treatment plant vehicle acquisition in that amount of $46,750. The request is for the following purpose: to replace a primary maintenance vehicle used regularly in the wastewater treatment department.
Again, the superintendent's here, if anybody has any questioning on this? Do you have anything you want to say to this?
Only that, it's a frontline maintenance vehicle that was mentioned, and we have sixteen, I think sixteen pump stations now, and we have to visit those pump stations every day. This truck will carry a crane, so we can pull pumps out of the pump station, replace them, in addition to any other equipment and tools that are needed to maintain those pump stations daily.
Okay. Councilor McCoy?
I just have a question. I just noticed that there seems to be discrepancy from what is mentioned as the appropriation from the supplemental appropriation from what we have in public hearing.
The amount I had in, and I read in the appropriation, it was revised at least once before, was in the amount of $46,750.
Okay. Okay, so...
Did you advertise $750 or $500?
Okay, any further questioning? Councilor Scott?
Joe, what kind of vehicle are you going to buy? What's it going to be?
This will be an F-350 Ford.
A what? Four-fifty Ford?
F-350 Ford. Right now, we have, it's a Chevy 2500 series, so we need to go with something a little bit heavier than the 2500 series, so we're going with a 350.
Four-wheel drive, too?
Yes.
Plow frame?
No.
Why not?
This, this truck cannot be used to plow snow. It's going to be used every day to visit pump stations, whether it's snowing or raining or the sun's out.
Well, you got the yard down there, you could plow with it.
We've got a backhoe down there, too.
All right.
Any other questioning?
Just one quick, what was the age of this vehicle?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
That'd be a cheaper way to pick up.
One of the, excuse me, one of the items that we also discussed in Finance, we talked about, even though this is a specialized vehicle, the savings we would get given for the fact that the existing one is a two thousand, and this one is fairly new, just the updated technology. We also discussed the fact that this is a payload issue, not a towing issue, and that's why we went with the heavier frame truck. And this is a gas engine, not a diesel engine, and so we had some very thorough and full discussion on this. That said, I'd like to open the floor to the public, to offer them the podium. If anybody would like to speak to this issue, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing none?
Just one quick comment, Councilor Winnie pointed out to me that on the request, it says it's a two thousand and one vehicle, so just for clarity. That said, I will make a motion for the following appropriation: like to see the amount of $46,750 appropriated from retained earnings and be appropriated to the wastewater treatment vehicle acquisition fund, for the following purpose: to replace the primary maintenance vehicle used regularly in the wastewater treatment department.
Second.
Okay, we have the aforementioned motion on the table to, for us, supplemental appropriation, appropriate money from retained earnings to wastewater treatment plant vehicle acquisition fund, for the following purpose: to replace the primary maintenance vehicle used regularly in the wastewater treatment department.
Second.
Okay, we have the aforementioned motion on the table to, for us, supplemental appropriation, appropriate money from retained earnings to wastewater treatment plant vehicle acquisition to replace a primary maintenance vehicle used in wastewater treatment department. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Councilor Hagan?
Our final public hearing tonight is a supplemental appropriation request from December twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, is for the following appropriation: the amount requested, $55,000, to be appropriated from retained earnings, an amount of $55,000 to the sewer department vehicle acquisition, in that same figure, $55,000, for the following purpose: to replace the primary towing vehicle used regularly in the sewer department. Again, this has all three of the appropriate city signatures on it, and passed the subcommittee on a three-zero vote.
That said, Joe, is still at the podium, if you would like to speak to this issue, please do.
This is a vehicle that we use primarily to pull the sewer flusher, sewer vector. The vehicle we have now is a 3500 series, it's too small. Our equipment that we need to pull has to be at least $13,000. This vehicle only can tow $19,000. It's got a cracked frame on it, it's a two thousand. The transmission is bad, and it's just unsafe to tow with the present vehicle.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent while he's at the podium? Councilor Hagan?
Is this the vehicle you mentioned that had, has been serviced numerous times, right, for the transmission?
Yes.
This has been kind of an ongoing problem with this vehicle?
Due to the work it has to do, it's, we've had several transmissions in it.
Any further questioning for the superintendent or the counselor? Okay, again, this is a public hearing. If there's any member of the public who would like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue, please do. The podium's open, just state your name and address for the record. Seeing none? Councilor Hagan?
I'll make a motion for the following appropriation: that we appropriate the amount of $55,000 to be appropriated from retained earnings in that amount to the sewer department acquisition, vehicle acquisition fund, for the following purpose: to replace a primary towing vehicle used regularly in the sewer department.
Second.
We have a motion on the table, a supplemental appropriation request to appropriate $55,000 in retained earnings to the sewer department vehicle acquisition, full amount, to replace replace the primary towing vehicle used in the sewer department. Are there, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
One more.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The public hearing is closed. We are now going to continue with reports, standing committees. Public safety, Counsel McCoy.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be February 29th, which is Wednesday, at 5:30 PM in the Conference Room A, which is in the basement. Our topics will be continuing review of parking issues on Chapin Street and request to add a no parking area between 94 and 104 Ferry Street. Also, in the form of a motion, would like to make, set public hearings for both the issues of the parking on Chapin Street, as well as the no parking between 94 and 104 Ferry Street, for our meeting on March 7th at 6:15 PM in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for the aforementioned items of Chapin Street and the request to add a no parking on Ferry Street. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Abstentions? Motion passes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
We do have one suggestion. Have you been able to get ahold of the resident on, for Chapin Avenue?
That's on my list, but I will, I have her number, so she will be part of the conversation.
Thank you. Appointments? Counsel Winnie?
Yes, thank you. Our next appointment, subcommittee meeting, is going to be held on February 29th at 6:00 in Meeting Room A in the basement. We will be inviting Ms. Allen, the nomination brought forth to us for appointment for the city planner, to attend that meeting with us. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Did we get that correct?
Yes. You'll come up. Counsel, Counsel Derby, ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance subcommittee met on February 8th at 6:00 PM, and we did discuss our agenda items, as well as during public speak time, we had a citizen submit to the ordinance committee some concerns about bicycle ordinances in East Hampton and not being in compliance with state law, and so we allowed them to speak during public speak time. And at this point, I think it would be prudent to actually formally request that we bring this proposal to the ordinance subcommittee, which is a proposal to update the bicycle ordinances in East Hampton, so I'll move that we send this to ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
Okay. Before I actually move forward, does the city clerk have a copy of that? Okay. We have a motion on the table to move the aforementioned bicycle ordinance to committee for review. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Counsel Derby?
Good. And I also would like to, after review, we decided that we were going to bring forward the ordinance amendment request, so I would like to set a public hearing for March 7th at 6:15 in these chambers to review Chapter 2, Section 2.6 of the general ordinance amendments.
Anybody going to say second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to set a public hearing on the aforementioned general ordinance amendment for Chapter 2, Section 2.6, for March 7th, 6:15. It's going to be a busy night, that night.
This is a quick one.
So I hope the clerk is going to order things correctly. That said, any further discussion on this particular motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry. Not me.
Did you oppose?
No, I didn't oppose.
Abstained? Okay.
Jumps we've done, sorry. Sorry, Mr. President. And we also, at our, at our meeting, reviewed the request to review the special permitting process, which we started to look at with the new members of the committee, and that being said, we do need to ask for an extension, and I'd like to ask for an extension in 90 days, and that is in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to extend the aforementioned item to review the special permit process for 90 days. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Counsel Derby, you still have the floor.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Property, Counsel Sakowski?
Well, you want, you want a report from property? You want a big, long one? Don't report this evening, sir.
Thank you, Counsel. We do have some old business pending. I'd like to make a special notice to this. We put this out there so that, in order to see if there's any interest, Counselor Oglevitz has actually volunteered to take on this little task, to be the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to formally appoint him tonight. This is not something we actually need to vote for. This is a volunteer task, so I do want to say that I am going to formally appoint you. We are going to meet with the chamber on the 24th to actually do the other side of the story, and I thank you very much for taking this little journey on. This is designed to help us tighten up and communicate better with the chamber, and so that we're all on the same page. I think this is an excellent idea, and I look forward to hearing from the counselor on the end. By that said, we do have some new business, and I'll turn this over to Counsel Winnie.
Yes, thank you. Move that we send the two mayoral appointments to Appointment Subcommittee, Alexis, and I'm going to apologize in advance, because I'm probably going to butcher this name, Bretton Nitzer, to the CPA Committee, which is a mayoral appointment, with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2014, and Jessica Jo Allen, city planner, with the term of expiration of March 5th, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend the aforementioned individuals to appointments for review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. That concludes, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Here, everybody?